To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the August 5th County Commission meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly. And Robert is in the front row with listening devices if you need them.
Routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any corrections or changes? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of July 29th, 2014.
Move the minutes. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $592,291.16.
Pay the bills. Second, paying the bills.
Motion and a second. Any comments? No. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
There are no reports today. Item five is personnel action. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Move for approval. Second?
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions for Carrie? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item B is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for August 2014.
Good morning, Carrie Dieter for Human Resources. I have quite the list for you today. So to get started, we have Kenneth Jacobs in the public defender's office, Angie Martel, Cory Heiss, Michael Markstrom, Tim Gustafson, Michael Walker, and Patricia Neville, all celebrating five years of service, the first four in the jail. Michael Walker's in the sheriff's office and Patty is Equalization. And Patty is here with us today. Care to make a few comments, Patty? Celebrating 10, we have Doug Blomker from Emergency Management who's here. Doug, podium. We also have Heidi from Pliny in the back corner, of course.
Thank you.
And then Cory from Equalization who's also here with us today. We have Marie Fox from the commission office celebrating 15 years of service, but she's not here. Dan Grapevine from the highway celebrating 35. And Sue Hopkins from Register Deeds celebrating 35. I don't think either one of them are here with us today. Sue may be coming next month instead. And then Mona Helseth is the winner at 40 years of service. Incredible. And you all know, of course, that Mona's with our state's attorney's office. So our thanks go to all of those individuals, a lot of years of service this month.
And we are thankful for the employees and that they like us well enough to stay with us for such a long time. So thank you very much.
Item C is to recognize volunteers in county government for July 2014.
Another big month, 245 volunteers throughout county. It's incredible.
Yep. And I think we say it every month, we couldn't do it without them.
Exactly.
A lot of dedicated people that work at county. Thank you.
Item D is a special commission action to consider a request to convert a vacant senior custodian position to a building maintenance technician and approve the immediate recruitment.
This is an item that you've already approved as part of your provisional budget for next year. Lloyd Olson is simply asking your approval to go ahead and complete that conversion this year. He does have the salary savings already accumulated for this year to cover the costs of those no extra expense in doing that conversion early. And I believe Lloyd is here in case you have any questions for him.
Any questions for Lloyd on this position? As Carrie said, we've talked about this already.
I'll make the motion. Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve special action to convert a custodial position to a building maintenance technician. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item C is application for abatement. Pam Nelson.
Good morning. Good morning, Pam.
We have an application for elderly freeze assessment, elderly assessment freeze. The ID number is 1-8-0-3-4. The amount would be for $1,043.43.
Any questions for Pam?
Make the motion. Second?
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Pam.
Thank you.
There are no notices and requests today. The next item is planning and zoning notices. Item A is the first reading and authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to consider a request to rezone from the A1 agricultural district to C commercial district and R1 residential. The legal description is track one, Miller's addition, southwest quarter, section 10, township 102 north, range 49 west of the 5th PM, Minnehaha County. Scott Anderson.
Yes, thank you, Scott Anderson, representing Minnehaha County Planning and Zoning. Today I'm asking you to set the, to allow the auditor to publish a hearing notice, to set a hearing date of August 26th, 2014, to be set in this, to be heard in this room at 9:00. This is a rezoning request to rezone approximately 17 acres from A1 agriculture to C commercial and R1 residential district. This item went to the planning commission and the planning commission unanimously voted to rezone the entire parcel to R1 residential, which is not what the applicant requested. I did work with the state's attorney. She advised me to advertise for both the R1 and C1. And then when it goes to the public hearing in August, you'll, options will all be open to you on what you'd like to do. So this property is approximately one half mile north of the Renner Corner on the east side of highway, South Dakota Highway 115. So my request to you today is to authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice for the hearing on August 26th.
I'll make the motion. Second?
Motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item B is the first reading and authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to consider a request to rezone from the RC recreational conservation district to the C commercial district. Legal description, lot 1, block 3, except the south 25 feet, west 25 feet of Berry subdivision. Lots 2 and 3, block 3 of Berry subdivision, and lot 4, block 3, except H1 in the south 430 feet, north 863 feet, east 476 feet, except H2, all in the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section 16, township 102 north, range 49 west of the 5th PM, Minnehaha County.
Thank you. Once again, Scott Anderson, representing the county planning department. This is a rezoning request 14-6 to rezone approximately 6.64 acres from RC recreation conservation district to C commercial. I'm asking that you authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice for a hearing on August 26th in this room at 9:00 a.m. The property in question is located on the south side of Renner Corner, directly across from the convenience store, gas station. And the planning commission recommended unanimously to rezone, to rezone this property. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, otherwise I'm asking you to set the hearing date for August 26th.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second?
Motion and a second. Are there any questions for Scott?
I would just point out that both of these items are within a half mile of each other there near Renner Corner on Highway 115.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item C is the first reading and to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to consider zoning text amendments related to the following. Article 19.05, conditional use permits, D, conditional use permit criteria.
Yes, once again, Scott Anderson, county planning. I'm asking you to authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice for August 26th at 9:00 a.m. in this room for some proposed tax amendments to article 19.05 of the county zoning ordinance. This is the, the section of, of our zoning ordinance that deals with conditional use permits. And what we are doing is, on the advice of states, of the state's attorney's office, we are incorporating some criteria that we commonly use for reviewing conditional use permits officially into the ordinance. And the state's attorney's office feels this will help better direct the planning commission on how they review conditional use permits and also set it in statute so the public knows that this is the criteria that we are using for the consideration of conditional use permits. This went before the planning commission at last Monday's meeting, a week ago yesterday. They recommended unanimously to move forward with the revisions to the zoning ordinance. So I'm asking today that you set the hearing date of August 26th in this room at 9:00 a.m. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. And.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval. Second?
A motion and a second. Are there any questions for Scott? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And item D is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to consider a petition to vacate a private right-of-way described as the remaining portion of South Prince of Peace Place, beginning at East 52nd Street, lying adjacent to block 1 and lot 12A. Block 2, Prince of Peace Addition to the city of Sioux Falls, and extending to the edge of lot 12A, block 2, all in section 35, township 101 north, range 49 west. Dave Heinnold.
Hi, David Heinnold, Planning Department. We received a street vacation to vacate a, a private road within the city of Sioux Falls. It's in Minnehaha County, north 57th Street. Vacation request is the remaining portion of the road lying adjacent to the property owned by Vera McKenon. It's in the, Vera McKenon's Prince of Peace Retirement Community. They're the only property owners that have access to the portion of South Prince of Peace Place, which is the right-of-way to be vacated. According to South Dakota Codified Law 31-338, states that any person may have private road laid out, changed, or vacated upon presenting a petition to the board of county commissioners of the county in which such petitioner resides under regulations provided for roads running through one county only. And that South Dakota Codified Law 31-37 requires that legal notice be published for two consecutive weeks and that the notice contain the time and place of the public hearing in which the street vacation will be considered. So action that needs to be taken is to authorize the county auditor to publish notice of a public hearing at 9:15 a.m. on September 2nd, 2014.
Okay. Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions for David? David, does this just strictly in Minnehaha County? Does it extend at all anyway into Lincoln County or is it just, it's all ours?
No, the, the south edge of it is 52nd Street, so it's well beyond.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item nine is a petition for compromise of lien. John Pecas.
Thank you, Cindy. These are somewhat confusing. If you guys had the opportunity to read it like I have, I've read it several times. First is on DPNO number 78123 in the amount of $11,046.99. The auditor's office just received a request to compromise a lien. The lien is currently resting against property that is attempting to be sold. The owner is currently trying to downsize it to move into a less expensive situation. However, there is no current closing date listed. And although it's been initially listed with a realtor, there was a title search done and there was a discovery of the $11,000 lien against the property. The lien is primarily for poor relief services. It was started in February of 2012. The original balance of the lien was already $12,696.99. The applicant has made regular payments toward lowering the lien for a total in the amount of $1,650, bringing the lien balance down to $11,046.99. The applicant is currently employed at two different locations. Her last year tax return shows an annual income of $16,227. She received a refund of $4,444. She lists assets of $133,242, consisting primarily of the value of the home in which she is trying to sell. She lists liabilities of $125,049, consisting mostly of the mortgage on the property, the county aid lien, and of course, there is a small loan from the community development loan fund of $11,979 that has to be paid upon sale of the home. The applicant is seeking to compromise the lien in full with no further payment and in recognition of what she's already paid on the lien. According to the estimate of final closing costs, if the house does sell for the listing price of 132, with closing costs of $13,934 and the outstanding mortgage of $96,367, the community development loan of $11,970, and the county aid lien of $11,046, she will receive from the proceeds a net loss. She'll have to come up with $1,317 just to close on her own property. The applicant is hoping the commission will forgive the remaining balance so she can put those funds towards a down payment for a less expensive home or for an apartment. Once again, she is appreciative of the county assistance that she received and, you know, remember that she did make payments of $1,650 despite her limited income. You know, I, I've read through this several times and the thing that jumps out at me is that, and I don't know if the applicant's here. Is the applicant here this morning? Then what I'll say is that it may be in this applicant's best interest to actually consult with a bankruptcy attorney because there are some limited chapters in the code, for example, under a chapter 13 bankruptcy, that would allow you to retain your ownership of the property, but you could probably avoid the community development loan back under the trustee's power of avoidance. You can go ahead and take care of that, do the payment plan. She has regular income between three to five years, see what the workout is, but after that, she could then receive the property, then go ahead and dispose of it. She could avoid that lien and, and the problem is, is that we're never going to get discharged in a bankruptcy. So I, I think she has other options here besides just coming to us and saying wipe off the lien. But quite honestly, she has a significant amount of property here and she does have regular income and she is under what I would call the means test under bankruptcy. She's a classic candidate for chapter 13. So before we, we say yes to this, I would ask that we just defer and ask her to possibly consult with, you know, let Robert, let her know that, that she should consult with a bankruptcy lawyer and of course she'll have to go through credit counseling, but then if, see what the options are there before she comes back and, and looks at this because she could actually net out more out of the bankruptcy than she could just coming and getting us to release our lien on this.
Anybody else have a comment? Commissioner Kelly?
You know, our problem is just coming out with some money at the end of the closing because a lot of this was poor relief. I'd like to float a motion to reduce this by $5,000. And she can also perhaps go to community development and ask for some forgiveness. And that would leave her the ability to sell a house, have a little money to make a down payment on an apartment or a house. It doesn't sound to me like she probably would want to get into a house again, but at least it wouldn't leave her saddled with ponying up at the end. This way she could, if she could get $5,000 out of community development, she'd have $10,000 and still pay off the other portion of our loan. So my motion would be to reduce the amount of the lien by $5,000.
I have a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. For discussion, let's talk about that, see any comments.
If Dick's willing to make that motion, I'll second it.
This party has made $32.50 payments. That's pretty significant effort. And, you know, I'm guessing $11,000 probably was a medical issue back in the day. And so those are hard to be, hard to control.
Commissioner Badega?
I would prefer that you didn't have to go through bankruptcy and I think the motion's worth consideration, but I also think that frankly, we're the last one always getting paid to these things. And I would hope that the community development group would consider doing that. And I'm not sure that $5,000 is going to be enough, to be honest, but if that's what the number is floated by them to see if in fact that will work, I would prefer that they avoid the whole problem of going through the court system for another cost, if you will, to the community for filing for bankruptcy and the whole process that that involves.
Yeah. Commissioner Burr?
So Commissioner Badega, what would be your suggestion?
I don't know what the number is, to be honest, because I don't know if the community development group will negotiate. And I think that ought to be done first and then come back. And if we can put a formula together to leave her with something to walk away from her problem and still have housing, which we would end up paying for also at the end, I think that solution is much cheaper than what's been suggested.
Yeah. Commissioner Kelly?
I can't, mine, for some reason, I have this computer so slow, it won't bring anything up, but it seemed to me on her closing statement that it would help her. And, and I do think community development has come to the table on this. I think we do a good faith act by doing it now and do, and, and she can go to community development and say, you know, I'm still on this problem, I'm still going to need help from you. If she doesn't get any help out of them, it'd be interesting to know at the end so that we could, if this ever comes up again, we know where they stand.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair? I wonder if we wouldn't be better off just reducing it to a flat $5,000 that she would still owe us. And so that would reduce her lien by $6,046.99. What would you think of that, Commissioner Kelly? Would you consider that a friendly?
Motion done before.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
I just have a question that if we, if we do this compromise and then you bring her the suggestions that we had, can she still come back and ask for another compromise this year?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, she could. So she, we could, we could start with this, give her all the suggestions that we have and she could still come back later and, and ask for us so we could review the situation.
With, with her situation, I think it's unlikely we're going to get paid much in the long run anyway. This would get us some $6,100. Now it sounds like Jeff, but I'm doing it more to help the lady than anything else. That's my purpose.
So I have a motion and a second to reduce it by $5,000 with a lot of suggestions for Robert to take back to her and then maybe report back to us at some point and see if there's anything else we need to do or if this is going to satisfy the problems. So I have a motion and a second for a reduction of $5,000. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. We are having troubles with our iPads as far as it doesn't necessarily bring stuff up. It might start.
You just have to wait.
Yeah, okay.
All right, well, next is on DPNO number 45358 and 70110 in the amount of $1,437.66. This particular situation, the auditor's received a request for compromise of lien. The applicants are attempting to purchase a home in Sioux Falls. The closing is scheduled for August 14th. The purchase price is $104,000 and during a title search, two county aid liens were discovered. The first is in the name of both applicants. The lien has a present balance of $1,265.36 and is for poor relief services. The lien was first recorded in May of 2009. The second lien was recorded only in the name of the husband and that is in the amount of $1,739.4 and that is for public defender and court-appointed attorney services. That lien was first recorded way back in April of 2001. Amination of that lien revealed that there were several questionable circumstances. The liens were from two other counties on this original one on record. The original was from Lake County and that has been paid in full to Lake County. The other was from Clay County with two entries of $783.37 for a total of $1,566.74. After further investigation, it was discovered that Clay County actually sent duplicate entries to us for our collection on those particular liens. So they've actually made an attempt to try to correct that. They're going to be sending the documentation to remove part of that, that lien amount that they currently attempted to double bill. So we told them, nice try, but they're trying to get that up to us to get that obviously corrected. Regardless, he still does owe a small portion of that to Clay County, the amount of $50. So at this point, our lien indicates we have $1,739 on the lien and the actual amount owed to Minnehaha County is $172.30. So the total amount owed to Minnehaha County is $1,437.66. The wife is currently employed. The husband is currently unemployed, but does provide daycare to the minor children. They list income in the amount of $31,543 on their last year tax return. It appears they received a refund of $7,974. Once again, they list assets of $22,710, consisting mostly of their vehicle and liabilities of $19,546 for essentially their credit card debt and money they still owe on the vehicle. They are first-time home buyers and they're attempting to get everything cleared up so they can take advantage of that particular program. And there is no cash required at the closing of this particular purchase. So they're requesting that the commission compromise the lien, $1,437.66 with no further payment. All right? And once again, they did indicate that they had no idea that there was any sort of lien attached to the property related to the poor relief services. And of course, they are very appreciative of the money that they received from the county and they're hoping that we will, of course, resolve the lien without any further payment. So in this particular instance, I'll make the motion. I don't know if I'll get a second.
What was your motion?
To go ahead and waive the lien amount without any further payment.
I have a motion for, to waive the lien amount for $1,437.66. Is there any comment? Or is there a second? Is there a second? Dies for lack of a second.
Madam Chair, is the applicant here?
I was going to see if there was a motion first and then I was going to.
Right, it died for lack of a second.
Okay. So is the applicant here? You can stay in your chair and you don't have to identify yourself, you should just talk loud so we can hear you.
Okay. The aid that we were saving in 2009 was after deeper premature hurt that we're trying to, we did best we could, went through all of our savings by May, we didn't need assistance to continue to pay our bills. We have done everything that we can to rectify our past debts and I thought that we had done that successfully. And so we got to this point and we're now realizing that there is a lien against us so we are unable to complete the step of purchasing our home, which we were trying to do to create a stable life for our children.
Yeah. The first motion died for lack of a second.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask Commissioner Pecas, I think it's page nine or so, it's, it's just a little confusing, the, the final conclusion, which is talking about the Clay County lien and then the balance owing Minnehaha County. So is our balance $172.30 or is it $1437.66?
I think it's, well, I can't get mine to pull up. So I, I'm going to trust, thank you. Yeah, I just got it to pull up. I see, I see, for example, Lake County listed as well as Clay County and I see the Clay County lien of $1,566.74, balance owing Minnehaha County, $172.30. So I'm assuming that we are owed $172.30 and the other balance that is being corrected is going to be coming back. So the actual amount we need to collect is 1,000, the $1,400 amount that I quoted before.
Okay.
Part of that is our obligation is that we have to collect for the other counties when they give us notice of that. So our obligation is to go ahead and to collect on that.
Kirsten?
So.
Kirsten has a comment. Just a minute, Commissioner Kelly.
I just want to clarify something. Robert, did you receive these materials at all? Did you have any, or is this all Commissioner Pecas? Who looked through this? Robert?
In response to your question, the commission office did receive this information. I've, have looked through it and I'm going through it now and having the same difficulties that a number of you are of, a little slow moving through the documents.
My laptop seems to be working fairly well. So my understanding is there's two separate DPNO numbers. One has to do with the Clay County and Lake County materials that is down to $127 or $172.30. The other one is a separate one for the, what are marked poor relief services, but I believe it's hospitalization payments. And that does remain, as I understand, $1,265.36 to Minnehaha County. So the addition, the addition of those two together, I believe, is what's still owed.
Yeah. That's that $1,400. Yeah. It's the one I quoted.
Just so you all have the same figures.
I'll get there eventually.
Yeah. There have been significant payments on this, on this lien.
We have to provide the lien with Clay County, so that has been satisfied.
Okay. So would that, that would make a difference? Yeah?
Can I ask?
Yeah.
When the payments are made, which lien, I mean, does it go against Minnehaha County, Clay County, or which lien does it go against? Or is it just towards, against the total?
They play, they pay Clay County, right? You paid Clay County when you were paying them, so then they let us know that they've paid it off. So then it just comes off of it, it's just.
So we never received the money to Clay County?
No, they, they paid Clay County.
So, so the other counties were paid off and we're still sitting with $1,500 roughly, plus or minus?
They didn't know that they owed us money too.
We get notice in Darlington. We get notice in- darling, correct me if I'm wrong, but we get notice from other counties, and if they're located here and they're no longer there, we actually are obligated to go ahead and receive those funds, and then we'll remit those back to those counties after we collect them.
But have they got priority over our lien? That's my question.
Well, my understanding is that liens go by order of priority, and so if theirs is sooner than ours, then they get paid first.
Let me see. What's the total?
And if I may?
Yeah.
That total that's given, that fourteen hundred dollar figure, that is in recognition already of the Clay and Lake ones being satisfied, that I understand, as I understand.
Okay. So, we're looking at, once again, fourteen thirty-seven sixty-six. That's what I've got here.
Sorry, Robert. Thank you.
Fifty percent. If you had fifty percent, it would be seven hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-three cents if you went with the fifty percent idea. Recognizing that they have made significant payments already.
Oh, no, that's in full. That's in full.
Oh, wait a minute. Got the wrong number.
It would be in full. So, it'd be happy about.
Because-
Half a foot sheels. That's just half a foot sheels. We're not coming.
No, that's right. That's right. Yep, that's right. Seven eighteen eighty-three would be fifty percent. Commissioner Kelly?
The original six hundred dollar poor relief was compromised. Was that by Minnehaha County? Do we know where that lien came from?
I don't know. Can I? Can you- The lien said it was Minnehaha County.
It was, and did we compromise it then?
I don't know. I'd like to tell you I don't have, you know, give me ten minutes and I'll look it up.
Oh, sorry.
I do know how that got compromised. It was part of the lien cleanup actions that we did. There was an error made when that lien was placed for the services were placed in the date. It was placed as oh-two-oh-nine instead of two thousand nine or something like that. So, it showed up on our lien cleanup actions, but it was an error. So, we comped it with the whole annual cleanup action.
Okay.
It has been corrected since.
But it was an expense, or it was not?
It was. It was a lien, but it just got compromised in error because the date was incorrectly entered on the screen.
And then it came back? And then they-
No, disconnected.
It didn't get re-recorded. So, there has been six hundred dollars.
It has been comped.
Thank you. Thank you.
Look for a motion on this one.
Madam Chair, from my point of view, this thing has been a little confusing with the other-
It's extremely confusing.
And I guess I'll renew the motion to compromise this with no additional payment.
Thank you, Jeff. I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to compromise with no additional payments on the lien. Are there any additional comments?
Substitute motion. I'd compromise the total seventeen thirty-nine, is that correct?
The total is fourteen thirty-seven sixty-six.
I'd compromise the balance upon payment of five hundred dollars.
I have a compromise for five hundred dollars. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second? Is there a second? Dies for a lack of a second. So, we're back to the original motion, which was to compromise the lien in full. Are there any other comments?
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Pecas?
Yes.
Bennega?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Heiburger?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Lien has been compromised in full.
At one.
Four to one. Excuse me. Four to one.
The next item is-
You can talk to Robert, and he'll help you finish whatever you need to do.
The next item is opportunity for public comment.
This is the time when we offer for anyone to speak about anything outside of the agenda. No one? Okay, we'll move on.
Regular business. Item ten is to authorize the chairman to sign a contract with blacktop paving in the amount of thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars for paving work on La Mesa Avenue. DJ Booth.
Good morning, commissioners. DJ Booth, the highway superintendent. In April of this year, we briefed the commission on the La Mesa Avenue project, and were directed to go ahead and move forward with paving that road with the county forces. We did begin construction by placing aggregate base course and grading the roadway. And then, as you remember, in June of this year, we had the flooding events, and the flooding had washed out a large majority of the grading work that we had completed. And so, because of the emergency response efforts that we've been working through, that has basically been sitting there since then, and we've determined that this roadway is on a potentially eligible list for emergency relief funds. And so, we've moved forward with a contract request to the commission for thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars to have blacktop paving, complete the aggregate base course and grading work that needs to be done prior to us paving. And then, we expect that this will be eligible for reimbursement funding through the ER program. And school starts, I think, in about two weeks, maybe two weeks from today or tomorrow. And so, the idea is that we execute the contract today, the contractor is able to complete the grading work by the end of this week, and then county forces pave the project next week. So, if you have any questions on that, I can answer them now.
Any questions, Commissioner Kelly?
I'm not sure you can answer, because unfortunately, planning is not here to help.
Yeah.
Oh, it's here. They are here. Good. This is all due to the George McGovern School, right? And it's my understanding that the city annexed that thing even though it is not contiguous?
I might be- go ahead, Scott.
Well, they annexed it. That is correct.
And it is not contiguous?
They used right-of-way and some easements to reach the-
Well, if they own the right-of-way, then why don't they fix the road? I'm going to support you because it's a FEMA deal, but I just don't understand how the city annexes it, takes the building permit cost, which is something like, in our case, would have been one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Is that right, Scott?
Well over a hundred and fifty thousand, in that range.
And then, we end up fixing the road. I understand we got to do it because for the school, but I think the city's ducking the responsibility on this one.
Said the former city councilman.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly, for your comments. Are there any other comments or questions?
I just appreciate Commissioner Kelly as well for those comments. You know, you throw a hundred and fifty thousand on top of three hundred thousand, six hundred thousand dollar TIF, and suddenly, we're talking about-
Half a million dollars.
Real money.
Yeah, it brings no money to tax anyway because it's a school.
It's a school.
And I just think, you know, I wish we had some say when they're doing this annexation because if they're going outside, I mean, this problem could come again. They could annex- the right-of-way deal, that, to me, is stretching the law, but maybe they can do it. But it's just not fair.
Is there a motion on this?
Motion to approve. Say it.
I have a motion and a second. Any additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, DJ.
Item eleven is consider a motion to authorize planning and zoning at the request of the Minnehaha Planning Commission to request South Dakota Department of Transportation to conduct a speed study on that portion of South Dakota Highway one fifteen between two hundred and fifty-seventh Street and North Eighty-Fourth Street. Scott Anderson.
Thank you, Scott Anderson, from the planning department. As you realize, we just set a number of hearing notices for some rezoning requests at the Renner Corner area. And at last week's planning commission meeting, there was, and actually, the month before that, we've had a lot of discussion about the speed of traffic traveling along South Dakota Highway one fifteen. And the discussion came about from not only the planning commission, but there were many, many citizens that attended that rezoning hearing that were very concerned about the speed, the safety, the turning motions, the turning, you know, the volume of traffic, the traffic numbers. And we actually had, I had invited Brooke White, who's sort of in charge of access management for DOT, to the meeting last week, and she attended. And she had a lot of good advice for us and indicated that we could request the Department of Transportation, their regional office in Mitchell, Scott Jansen, to conduct a speed study and traffic safety study on that portion of, or whatever portion we felt needed studying along South Dakota Highway one fifteen. So, I prepared a map here, and I'll set it on the elbow here. So, basically, what I'm asking is, the planning commission made a motion to ask you to forward this on to the South Dakota Department of Transportation to study the speed, the traffic, the turning motions, the access management points for a one-mile segment of Highway one fifteen, one mile north and one mile south of Renner Corner. And Renner Corner is right here. And so, I think that we're seeing, there's a new church that's been built there in the last five years. We now have two significant rezoning requests, one for commercial, one for residential and commercial in this corridor. Brooke White also indicated that this isn't something that they're going to jump right on. It has to fall into a schedule of their studies that they need to look at, so it could be a while. But let's get it on there is sort of the philosophy that the planning commission had. So, my request to you today is to authorize me to send a letter on your behalf requesting the DOT, Department of Transportation, to conduct this speed study and traffic safety study on this two-mile segment of South Dakota Highway one fifteen. Won't cost us anything. Not sure what timetable it'll fall into, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. And I know that the community out there will greatly appreciate the work that we're doing to try and evaluate the speed and safety of South Dakota Highway one fifteen.
Any comments, Commissioner Barth, Bennega? Commissioner Bennega?
I am appreciative of the fact that they're interested in helping us, and I think we ought to do it, but it seems almost unreasonable that they can't give you an estimate on when they're going to do it timeframe-wise. I mean, they know their schedules and how long things take. Can't we press them for a timeframe?
Well, I think we can ask them to expedite this, and given the development pressure that we've seen there, maybe we could ask them on using that reason to move it as far ahead as possible. And I think that Brooke White may not have been aware of, she may not have known the exact volume of work. It could be relatively soon. It could be, I just didn't think she wanted to speak out of turn saying they'll get right on it, but I don't know. We will have to contact, and it goes to the regional office in Mitchell. So, it's not even here. It goes to Mitchell.
Any other comments, Commissioner Barth?
Scott, could you zoom in a little bit on this? And, you know, we had two applicants, one just south of Renner Corner, and Scott, maybe you could point to that.
I have my hand here.
Throw your mind. In any case, they will not be entering the highway off of the existing farm access. So, the one south of the Renner Corner-
The six-and-a-half acre parcel of property that was considered for rezoning at last Monday's meeting basically is this six-acre parcel right here. It's adjacent to County Highway one thirty on the corner of County Highway one thirty and South Dakota Highway one fifteen. And as Brooke White indicated, when a parcel of property has two access roads, such as this parcel, and one is a state highway and one is an alternate, the state highway always requires them to have their approach, their primary access off the alternate location. So, I don't think that, based on what we heard from Brooke White, and she's in charge of access points and access management for this portion of South Dakota, the developer will not get any additional access points off of South Dakota Highway one fifteen. They do have legal access off Monarch Lane, and they have legal access off of South Dakota, or, sorry, County Highway one thirty. The other parcel of property that we are looking at, I'll move this just a little bit. The other parcel of property that we are looking at is this parcel is basically right here. It's a seventeen-acre parcel of property. It's about a half-mile north of, you can sort of see where this row of trees are right here, and then it goes all the way back. And it's a seventeen-acre parcel. There's a request for some residential and commercial development from the applicant. This was the parcel that the planning commission felt was maybe leapfrogged the commercial area a little bit too much, and that we had a lot of good discussion. This was an item that was continued for two meetings so we could have a really detailed discussion on Renner Sanitary Sewer District, Minnehaha Community Water. DOT was there because we wanted to be, the planning commission wanted to be very well-educated on what was going on there, and I think we had a very good discussion. And that rezoning is also going to be heard on the twenty-sixth of August, so we'll have quite an interesting meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, on that northern spot there, they wanted, what was it, eight acres, Scott, along the highway-
For of commercial.
For commercial. And we wouldn't give it to them. And part of the reason was access, and the neighbors across the street there said that traffic coming south crest the hill and are on them immediately at sixty-five miles an hour.
Yeah.
And, you know, the applicant for this commercial area had a plan, and he said also, "Who wants their backyard to be a sixty-five mile an hour speed limit? It's not right for residential. It's better to have, you know, a commercial operation of some kind, whatever it is." But, you know, you don't want your swing set a few feet away from some guy zipping lung. And this highway, I believe we've had two fatal accidents and one near fatal accident in the last year. That's just out of my own anecdotal memory, but the speed and the traffic on that road is high. You know, we need to have turn lanes if nothing else. The state did say also that what they normally do is measure how fast people are driving and set the speed limit at that. And as Commissioner Pecas knows, Fifty-seventh Street should be eighty miles an hour.
That's what I was going to say. You and I both live on Fifty-seventh, and sixty-five is about the average.
Only if you're using one wheel, though. Anyway, for public safety, really, this is getting to be a pretty congested road, and it could easily be three lanes or four lanes all the way up to Dell Rapids, in my opinion. But certainly, Renner is a busy, busy spot.
I think we have less housing and stuff in Ellis than we do by Renner, and the speed limit in Ellis is twenty-five, and it is well enforced. Of course, that's a county highway, but-
You can learn from experience.
I have not been picked up, but I know many people that have.
People in sports cars, you never know.
Are there any more questions for Scott?
Thank you. I'll make the motion.
I have a motion and a second to authorize planning and zoning to request South Dakota Department of Transportation to conduct a speed study. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Scott.
Item number twelve is consider a resolution to restore tax deed number two-four-eight-three, record ID one-four-one-seven-four, to former owner of record, Bob Litz.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the auditor's office. And what I have before you this morning is to restore a tax deed, number twenty-four-eight-three, hardy ID one-four-one-seven-four, to the former owner of record. Minnehaha County holds under tax deed proceedings tax deed the numbers I just gave you. The Minnehaha County treasurer has received payment from Citibank in Irving, Texas for the amount of nine thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. This represents all taxes, assessments, interests, and costs owing the tax deed. We're asking for approval of the resolution submitted for your consideration to restore the property to the heirs of the former record of owner, according to SDCL ten-dash-twenty-five-dash-forty-one.
Make the motion. Second.
Motion and a second to approve. It's always nice to have a large check that's owed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner. The other item that I have here today is a request to sign contract for the purchase of two eight-fifty model ballot tabulators. In a concerted move to improve and speed up the election process, the auditor's office is requesting the purchase of two new eight-fifty ballot tabulation machines. Recently, there have been some election improvements, in particular, the addition of Windows Seven into some election processes that enable us to take advantage of the new technologies offered- offered by this machine. Our 650s were originally slated to be replaced in 2018, but investigation has revealed that all four, that instead of four new machines, we would only need two to handle a county of our size. And this also accounts for some future growth over the next 10 years. Due to reduced cost and aging technology of our old machines, we think it time to replace them before the next election. Expense of the machines would come from HAVA funds administered by the Secretary of State's Office. Conversations with that office revealed that we could apply for and receive the funds within a month. This purchase would put the HAVA fund level at about $460,000. The total cost of the machines would be $217,625, delivered and set up. That price comes with staff training and three days of onsite election support before, during, and after the election. Testing would commence normally, as we do with the current machines. And I did a little cost analysis there on the 650s. You know, we had a total for the hardware support and firmware agreement of $8,376 for a total of four machines. With the 850s, for the same things, we have a total of $7,880 for the total of two machines, which is a $496 savings. If we had four of the machines, obviously, the cost would be more. But we've got opinion from people in the industry that a county of our size would get by with two of them. Also enclosed are some opinions from jurisdictions that currently use the machines. And the action today that I'm requesting is to approve the purchase agreement and contract for the 850 ballot tabulation machines.
Any more questions for Commissioner Barth?
Bob, I'm supportive of this, but I do have a couple of questions. You know, when I see the nomenclature, the 650 machine being replaced by the 850, are there no other manufacturers that make these? Is this the only company that makes these products?
There are other things out there, but I thought having the continuity of having ESS as a service provider, and this is their recommended machine, and is the natural extension from the 650, I thought the similarities from the machine, the company, being familiar, and it just made sense to go with them.
Madam Chair? So do they have a local office or anything, or do they come in from somewhere else?
ESS comes out of Omaha to service our machines, and they have a, they have a support staff and office down there, but their main one, main office is out of Chicago.
Any other questions?
Finally?
Yep.
So as far as the state's attorney, is there any issue with buying things this expensive without going to bids? Kirsten.
He's thinking.
And again, I like, I like the product. I just want to make sure we do it according to HOIL.
Well, as I understand this, if I can ask the auditor a question, is this hooked in with a particular service contract that we have entered into?
Not currently. The service contract that we have right now is for the 650s, and they're by the same company. And the brand of the machine is the same machine. So we would be entering into a new service contract with the 850s with the old company.
Okay. With the service contract that we have currently, would that company be able to service other machines outside this manufacturer?
That's unknown. I'm not certain about that. And I would probably tell you no, because this is their machine that they tout.
I would probably ask that we maybe defer this item so I can look into that question that Commissioner Barth has posed at this time, so...
I'd like to ask if IT has some insight or comments on...
Yeah, so I'd like to just to speak on the 850 in general. Monty, water box, Minnehaha County IT Department.
Thank you.
And then speak maybe a little bit on the bidding part of it as well. So in general, I guess the IT department gets involved with, you know, the taking the tabulations off of the machine and working with them. And the 650s use zip drives, if you remember what those are, big, larger discs that go onto zip discs, that are difficult to get and whatnot. So the newer machines are designed to work with USB flash drives, Windows 7. So it is the right direction to go, and IT is supportive of it. As far as the bidding rules, I guess you might want to take a look to see if this fits under the typical technology and software solution that is typically exempt from some of those bidding rules due to the fact that this device is not the same as, you know, another device. So, you know, you're typically purchasing this directly from the vendor, so, you know, you're not comparing apples to apples.
And if I may speak to that, and that's the distinction I'm after here, is I would like a little time to look at this, being a hardware solution versus a software solution, how the law applies to those two different things. That's really the issue that I'm interested in looking at. This is nothing to say that the request isn't warranted. I just want to make sure that we're following the legislative directives, if you will, appropriately. So I would like to look at that distinction and how, because really, it's in the same...
Yeah, it's a combined solution of hardware and software. So those can always be a little challenging. Yeah, I guess I would argue that it would not fall underneath the normal bidding guidelines.
Commissioner Kelly?
I have a motion with a comment afterwards. Motion to defer for one week.
Would that be enough time, Kirsten?
Yes.
Okay, second.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any additional comments, Commissioner Kelly?
I have a question for mine.
I think it's very unfortunate that legal counsel wasn't, you know, wasn't brought into this early. No, I really do. I mean, I think this should have been cleared through legal. It's a big contract, and if there's questions that arise today, it's not fair to ask Kirsten to make that decision today. And I really believe that that should have been handled well before we even approached this.
And if I may, just to be fair, the contractual language was presented to me, and I did look at that, and Bob had me look at that. The distinction we're talking about, now that Commissioner Barth brings that up about it being physical equipment, is why I kind of want to take a step back and look at it. So, I mean, the auditor did show me the document, at least, but now that I understand the hardware-software combination that's at issue here, I'm just doing this out of an abundance of caution. So I just want to be...
Thank you. I apologize.
Yeah.
Commissioner Barth?
Well, I'm appreciative of that, Kirsten. And Bob, I think this looks like good stuff, and I did not, it did not occur to me before today that this might be an issue. But I'd like to ask, Monty, so you think that this looks like a good solution to this as well with the upgrade in technology that'll let you get rid of the older, the older information method?
I do. You know, the technology aspect of these, the current 650 ballot counters is very old. We did inquire, I did inquire a while back to see if there's any way you could put some of the newer, you know, USB drives and whatnot on the 650s, and that's not an option. So, you know, the vendor, you know, has a 650 ballot counter that is what it is, and it uses very, very old technology, so...
I have a motion in a second on the table to defer. Are there any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We will take it up next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 14, consider a motion to authorize the use of personnel savings in the air guard budget for operational expenses for education, training, and clothing and equipment. Keith Winion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Keith Winion, Air Guard Commission Supervisor. I am seeking your authorization to use our surplus in personnel services to cover operational expenses, such as education and training, clothing, and equipment.
About a year or two ago, when we had budgets, started having budget issues, this is one of the things that we asked, that they come in and request to use funds in different areas. And so that's why he's bringing this forward.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Are there any other questions or comments? Commissioner Barth?
Is there any other things that we can use this money for? I mean, we...
It's pretty set.
It's pretty set, so we couldn't buy another car, for example.
Right.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item 15, consider a motion to supplement the emergency food and shelter budget from the emergency food and shelter fund in the amount of $16,828.88, representing the second half from the 2014 emergency food and shelter program allocation. Carol Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Director of Human Services. Just a request to fund the second half of the emergency food and shelter budget from the emergency food and shelter fund, commonly known as EFSP. I think we've done this for about 20-some years. You did the first half already. The second half is $16,828.88. Just to let you know, we've been using this for motel costs because affordable housing is such an issue in our community that our motel costs, because we can't get families into permanent housing, has been huge for us. We're already $7,000 over that line item for the annual expense this year. Significant increase from last year. So we have served 153 people with this and provided 1,579 nights of shelter. So with that, we request for the supplementation.
Is there a motion?
There is. Second.
A motion in a second. Any questions for Carol? Commissioner Kelly?
Just to comment, I think I mentioned this before, but in the third or fourth line of Carol's remarks, she said, "Started as a temporary response to the recession in If you want to know what government's gotten growing, big, 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 that's temporary, what, 30-some years later?
Any other questions or comments?
I think income tax was put in at World War I as a temporary measure.
And just to let you know that temporary also applies to the fact is that we can only provide 30 days of shelter to people. So that assistance for somebody is temporary.
No, I don't have a problem with it. I just had to make that comment. Carol, you know that.
We have a motion in a second on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Carol.
The next item is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Bennega?
Just very briefly, yesterday, Commissioner Kelly and I and representatives from the public safety side of the operation, if you will, spent seven hours interviewing individuals in the potential of helping us with our long-range plan for a strategic plan on how to meet the physical needs of our public safety facilities. So it was a long, grueling effort, and we'll be checking references and moving forward with that in the near future.
Okay. Any other liaison reports? Any new business? Any old business?
See you at the fair.
I was going to say, the fair is going on, and we'll go now through Sunday. Lots of exciting events going on. I also went and listened to Senator Thune yesterday, and I enjoy listening to him, but I'd say it was all pretty bleak yesterday, so... Any other comments? Look for a motion to adjourn into contract negotiations and pending litigation legal briefing.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.